Hello everyone, this is Richard Burke, I'm with executive, or excuse me, I'm the executive director of Western Liberty Network. And I am here to provide a training on how to testify in front of your school board for parents' rights in education. Parents' Rights in Education is one of the premier organizations that highlights parental rights in education. And it also supports school choice and does other things to empower parents. So I'm glad that Val is here today. And I also want to welcome those who will be watching this recording coming ahead. The Parents' Rights in Education. Website is currently down, so some folks were not able to get on this recording. But we'll make sure that this is available to them and they can watch it at their convenience on demand. So anyway, what I'm going to do first is I'm going to share the screen and show you the parents' rights. Excuse me, the parent activist training center. Which you can get to by looking at parentsrightsineducation.org and then going to the Parents Activist Training Center. I encourage everyone to log on to the site. If they log on to the site and they get a an account, then you can take the full training. The training provides a variety of courses on a variety of topics. And provides quizzes and you can be certified. As somebody who has been trained by Parents' Rights in Education to perform the various skills. That are required and the ones that we're going to be talking about today are. How to testify in front of a board or a commission, particularly a school board. So go to parentsrightsineducation.org and go to the Parent Activist Training Center. And you will see this site and you'll be able to use your username and a password and you'll be able to log in. And participate in these various trainings. So today, what I'm going to be providing is a session that supports that training. On how to testify in front of your school board. So. The first thing that you're going to want to do is to know your board, to know your school board. And to do that, you're going to want to know the members that you're going to be talking to. Obviously, if you're talking to a school board, you're going to want to know as much about the members as you can. Particularly their backgrounds, the issues that they're particularly interested in. The things that you know, you might agree upon, the things you might be opposed on. And craft your testimony based on what you learn about the members you're going to be talking to. So what I advise people to do first is to visit the website of their school board. And so I'm going to share the screen again. And just for an example, I'm going to look at the Crook County School District. This is the Crook County School District website. They are the school district that. A govern schools, government schools in the Prineville, Oregon area. And every school district's website is going to vary a little bit, but they'll all have some things in common. This one is a little bit easy to reach, school board. Okay, if you go to the school board, you'll be able to see board members, agenda minutes. Various videos, that's an archive of previous meetings. You can learn about their budget committee, their plans, their policies. You can look at quite a bit. There's a lot of information that's typically available on school board websites. And so what I would do is I would go to school board members. This is going to tell you who's on the various school boards. You're going to see a lot of information that's here, and this gives you a lot of biographical information. She served in the army, she was in Iraq. She wants accountability integrity. This is tells you a little bit about her background. She has kids in the school system. This one here, Scott Cooper is a longtime resident of Creek County. His family has been in Creek County. He has served in public office in a variety of capacities, tells you a lot about, you know, what he's involved in. So. Excuse me, learn what you can about the members of the school board you're going to be talking to. Now I'm going to take a look at, I'll take, I'll pick on Scott Cooper, okay? There's a lot of information that you can do to check out something about the member. So I'm gonna. Copy Scott Cooper and I'm going to do a search on him. Scott Cooper. Brook. County. My packing spells, skills aren't the best. Okay. This tells you a little bit about him. You can look at any of these things. This is his LinkedIn page, Neighbor Impact, something that he's involved in. Okay, you can look at a little bit about that. It's a nonprofit organization. You can see, here's an article about him. In the Ben Bulletin. This says he won't seek a third term as county judge. He decided to run for the school board instead. You can learn a lot about these people. So research the people that are on your school board. Learn as much as you can about them. Okay, this talks about his role. On the Creek County School Board. After the last election where they said the mama bears win majority. These are the people who won. They're conservatives. They're all WLN trainees, by the way. And this talks about what will happen. You know, what direction the school board might go in and it mentions the school board members. Do a lot of research on the people before you testify before them. Learn what you can. Now. The next thing you're going to want to know is what's going on with the school board before you testify. If you go to home and go to school board. You're going to see the school board calendar. This will tell you when the meetings are. Okay, now apparently, based on what I see here. They move around a little bit. They hold their school board meetings. At different schools in their district at different times and this gives you what their schedule is. So that tells you when the meetings are, so you can add this to your personal calendar. We go back, we want to look at the school board agenda. And so here is the agenda. Okay, this tells you how to find the schedule here. Here are the school board packets for 2023. A packet is a bunch of information that's provided to members of school boards. So here's the, what do we got? The most recent one. Is the May board, May eighth board packet. So this is a PDF you can download. And see what they're looking at. This talks about things that have been on their agenda, things that have been removed from the agenda. Gives you the minutes of the previous meeting and a lot of other information. So this also tells you how you can get information. By sending your comments to Heather Hickson. You can also ask for information and this is where you will find information. There's also streaming information where you can view previous school board meetings. If you're dealing with a topic that has been dealt with before and is continuing to be dealt with. You can see what they were doing and what they were thinking and the statements that were made right here. Again, if you live in another area. The location will differ, but you'll basically get the same thing. I'll go, I'll take a second here and I'll go to the Beaverton School Board. Okay, this is the Beaverton School District School Board site. And here it is. And you'll find that that things are here, they're in a different place. And it's a little hard to find, but. You'll be able to find it. Let's see, we've got. This talks about all the different schools, charter schools. This is the quick search section. You're going to bury it a little more here, but. Parent squares. It's where they try to tell you things. What is here, resources you can look at. But anyhow, if you dig. Here you go, school board. School board members. Wait for the section to load. This tells you all of the people who are here on the school board. So if you look for this one, Sunita Garg, District Four. Do a search on her. You'll find a lot of resources to learn more about Sunita Garg. Here's a newspaper article about her that you can look at. Point is, every school district is going to be different. Every school district is going to have something different to say about. The school board, you know, providing with a place to start. And there will also be information like here, this is, I stumbled on this, public testimony protocol. How to provide live public testimony, written public testimony and so on. Do your research. You know, if you want to testify, so that you'll know as much about the board as you can. If there are questions you don't know the answers to. Then what you're going to want to do is just call the district. Most of the time, not always. You know, there are times when school districts are very obstructionist and they don't want to. Deal with people and they're wondering why you're asking for information. But most of the time, school districts are pretty cooperative in answering questions that you have about the school board members. And most of them have a contact us link as the Beaverton School District does here. And provides a phone number, an address, and you can ask for the information that you want. So. What you're going to find is when you go to the Parents' Rights in Education website. Let's see if it's up yet. The site has been down, but we're going to see if we can get in now. Yeah, it looks like it's still down, but that's okay. If you go on, you're going to find that. There are, this information is provided through videos and you're also going to be able to take a quiz. Where you'll be able to test this information. And you know, I can go over this quiz right now. Val, you're still with us? And so. The first question on the quiz is, where is the first place you should look for information on the school board? The possibilities are the school district website, the local paper and newsletters from the public high school.
School district website.
That's correct. You know, the others are great. You can look for information on those other locations, but it's good to start at the school district website. And it will lead you to a lot of other places in addition to the other two that were provided. Number two of the quiz is what piece of information is not provided on the district website about current school board members? A, the term end date. B, their favorite president and C, issues they deal with in the school district. I bet you know what this one is, Val?
Probably their favorite president. Although I don't know, is there a rule against that?
You know, there's nothing, there's nothing preventing them from posting what their favorite president is. But that's typically not something that is on the the school board website.
Fair enough.
And the third question is, what is not often included in testifying protocols and procedures? A, COVID restrictions, B, testimony time limit, and C, what you need to wear.
What you need to wear.
That's right. Although I do advise people. To dress business casual when they testify. If they testify and they, you know, it's, you know, people. You know, care about how folks look. Appearances matter. In theory, they shouldn't. In theory, it should be just the civic value of whatever they have to say. But if they dress business casual or otherwise look like they're to be taken seriously, people are more inclined to take them seriously. So you know, that is the information I have to provide on knowing your board and that will get you a good start. The next thing is preparing your testimony. This is very important. A lot of folks will just go in, they'll sign up to testify. And then they'll just start speaking from the heart. There's nothing wrong with speaking from the heart and there's nothing wrong with speaking extemporaneously. But a lot of times, this information comes across as overly emotional and. Doesn't always translate correctly to policy decisions that are to be made by the board. And so we ask people to prepare their testimony in advance. Now do not create a script. People reading from a script often look like they're reading from a script and so it's like. Okay, it's like, let's get started. Preparing your testimony is extremely important to making an effective argument. People reading from a script. You know, are not as effective as people who are speaking, you know, from the heart. It's not to say you shouldn't prepare your testimony. That's what this section of the training is about, but. Don't read from a script. People respond to authenticity and remember, your audience is not just the school board members that you're speaking to. You're also speaking to anyone who might be watching public access television. You know, a lot of cable companies cover school board meetings on public access television. And people do watch public access television. Some of it could be streamed, some of it could be archived and is viewed later. You want to make sure that you are taken seriously. There's people in the meeting with you. Some of whom might be inspired by what you say, might be activated. It could be allies, they could come up to you and say, what can I do to help? And you want to be taken seriously. There could be newspaper reporters. From, you know, whatever local paper covers your area. They could be covering the school board meeting and if they see you, they want you. You're going to want to be taken seriously. So dress, you know, just business casual, a nice pair of jeans, a nice shirt. You know, a dress or a nice blouse, whatever it is that's appropriate to your community, you know best. But don't overdo it, you know, don't do a full blown business suit. You can, but it's not necessary. Business casual is usually adequate. Now, when you're preparing your testimony, the first thing you want to do is be very clear. With yourself about what the purpose of that testimony is. Most of the time, if you are testifying, your purpose is to get the school board. To vote for something or vote against something. Sometimes the purpose is to get. The board to pay attention to something that's going on that they are not dealing with. But remember, when you're testifying, you're not just speaking to the school board. Your audience is much bigger than those five or seven people. You're also talking to the people in the room and anyone who might be watching a streaming episode of some blog or. Somebody that might be reading a newspaper article that's covering you. Now. Depending on the meeting's agenda. You may want to testify on a couple of things. If your matter, if the matter you care about is not on the agenda. You're going to want to speak during a section called open communications. Open communications is a period of time. Where people may speak on items that are not on the agenda. This is your time. To bring up something that you don't think the school board is dealing with. Otherwise, you're going to testify during the business item itself. Now remember, when you show up, show up early. There will be a piece of paper there for anyone who wants to testify. You're going to want to fill it out. And the reason why you want to show up early is because. School boards typically take public testimony in the order in which they receive those sheets. Sometimes they're blue sheets, you know, but they're always designated as testimony sheets. So get there early, fill it out and hand it to the secretary or administrator who is there. And there will be someone there before the board is who will accept these sheets. And they will generally take those sheets in the order in which they are received. Now that said, if the school board wants public testimony. They will sometimes first ask experts to testify and that could be other public officials. It could be lawyers, statisticians, scientists, whatever they think provides expert context. For the, for the matter at hand. They will seek that testimony first, but then they will take public testimony. And that's typically taken in the order in which it was received. So let's see. And remember, this is one of the most powerful ways to bring attention to the issue you care about. What you're going to find is that many school board members will ask scientists. Or psychologists or lawyers or other politicians to testify first. Often, this is to provide them with political cover to cast an unpopular vote. They can say, gosh, you know, I didn't really want to do that, but the lawyer said we had to. Or the scientist gave us compelling testimony. You know, I didn't really agree with it, but I had to do it. This is what it's for. Now, if you are testifying in front of a board. Don't try to compete with scientists, statisticians and lawyers unless you are yourself. A scientist, statistician or lawyer. You play on their turf. You're probably going to lose unless you're a credible expert. But you have something even more powerful than that. You have your personal testimony. And make sure that, that you have a personal story as to why the issue you're testifying about is important to you. Now, technically, one can argue that. Personal testimony might be, you know, compelling. But legal arguments, scientific arguments and statistical arguments. Are more credible and you need to argue with those. And you might say, well, if that's true, why am I offering personal testimony? And the answer is because personal testimony usually has more impact in a political setting. Remember, this is politics. It's not logic. It's not academic debate. It's politics. And politicians never want to be in a public setting. Being seen as crushing a constituent or working or hurting a family or doing anything like that. So I'll get into that a little bit better, but think about your personal story. But this is, this is the time when you've got them, and by them, I mean the public officials. You've got them in a corner. They are under public scrutiny. You are talking to them eye to eye. And they are being watched and nothing that they do during these meetings can be, you know, taken off the record. So you have a tremendous advantage. Make sure you, you use it. Typically, when you testify, you are given between two and five minutes to speak. Most commonly, you're given three minutes to speak and it sometimes depends on how many people want to talk. Since there is a time limit, it might be hard for you to. Cover everything you want to address. But first of all, make sure that no matter what you do, do not go over your time limit. Make sure that you always stay within that limit. What happens is if you exceed the time limit, once that, you know, clock goes to zero. They are thinking, oh my God, they're still talking. I don't really want to shut them down, but if I give them more time. I'm going to have to give everybody else more time. And so now they're not thinking about what you're telling them anymore. They're thinking about how to politely get you off the microphone. So that they don't have to give everyone else more time and they don't find themselves there by midnight. You know, as somebody who loves good civics, my view is, you know, to hell with that. You need to. Hear what people have to say, but this is how school board members are. So make sure you never go over your time on it. If you have too much to cover and you cannot do it in two minutes or three minutes. What I recommend that you do is make sure that you cover one topic only, one topic only. But you come with other people as a team. Bring two or three or four more people who will also testify. And you will cover one aspect. Of what you want to say and each of the other people will cover a different aspect. And between all of you, you will be able to cover what it is that you want to do. So form a testifying team. Let me stop here for a second, Val. Is this useful to you?
Yes, yes it is.
Okay, good, good, excellent. Now, when you testify, there's a certain kind of protocol and it's important that you observe this protocol. The first thing you want to do is start by stating your name, your address. What you do for a living and whether or not you have children attending the school. You know, and this is all very important. Whatever other additional information you want to provide, it's up to you. But remember, the more introductory information you provide, the less time you're going to have to make your point. So I would begin, if I was sitting down right now and I was going to testify. I would say, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Richard Burke. I live at 123 Oak Street in Westland, Oregon. And I'm a parent, I'm active in my community and I have three children in the schools. That's a good way to start. This tells them several things. The fact that you're observing protocol and you're dressed business casual tells them you're not a nut. It also tells them that you respect the process and that you respect their office. And that you're not setting out simply to yell at them and embarrass them. This is important because although they are public servants, they're also people and. You know, they're in a site, they're in a setting where they're being observed, where they're being, you know, videoed. And there's a newspaper there. They don't want to look bad. So if they see somebody who observes proper protocol, that helps them to let some of their defenses down. Because although they should be thinking, hmm, I'm interested in what this citizen has to say. What they're really thinking is, I don't know who this person is. I don't know if they're a threat or they're an asset. My shields are up and I'll just listen to them and see what happens. So if you observe proper protocol, you're well dressed, you're polite. And you introduce yourself in this way and address them, you know, by their title, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. They're going to say, okay, this isn't a nut, you know, this isn't a flamethrower. This is somebody who understands the protocol and is acting professionally. Okay, I can relax a little bit. And this makes them more inclined to listen to what you have to say. By telling them what you do for a living and how you're involved with the community, you're telling them that you know people. Again, this shouldn't necessarily be relevant. Your ideas should be able to stand and be evaluated on its own merits. But being politicians, they think, okay, this person, you know, they're a member of the Kiwanis Club. They've got kids in the school district, you know, they volunteer for things, whatever it is you do. They're going to say they know people, they know people, and if I tick this person off. They're going to tell everybody they know that we're a jerk and they're not going to vote for us in the, in the next election. So be sure you tell them who you are, not just your name. But how you're active in the community and that you're invested in the school system. So that, you know, they don't, they not only know your name, but they know. You know, who you are, that they should respect your opinion from a political perspective. So. If you are a public office holder or a member of an organization working with issues relevant to your school board. You know, tell them that, but make sure that you are speaking as an individual. Say, look, I'm only speaking for myself as an individual, but I am involved with the Kiwanis Club that has been involved in the local schools. And I am also a member of Parents' Rights in Education. Okay, this tells them that you are active in the school issues. But you're not attempting to speak on behalf of the organizations that you might not be authorized to speak on behalf of. When you start any statement with speaking individual, as an individual only for myself and then talking about the members. Of the organizations that you belong to, you protect yourself from claims that you are. Fraudulently trying to represent the organizations that you speak to. So this will be very helpful. Okay, then finally. Tell the school board what issue you are addressing and how you stand on the issue. State the issue, tell them what you want them to do and you'll provide it in the information. Then with issue explanation, you're going to provide as many details about the issues as you can. Now this sounds like a lot, but it's actually very simple. Let's say that there is a charter school that the school board is thinking about shutting down. I, as a parent, might simply say this. You know, Chairman Smith, Members of the Board, my name is Richard Burke. I'm active in the community. I'm a member of the Local Optimists Club. And I have three children in the government schools. One of them is gifted. One of them was identified as being gifted and was not challenged in the schools. And so she was bored and then she started acting up and then she started acting out. And being in trouble, she got involved with the wrong kids, starting, you know, mouthing off at home. And we started to have lots of problems. Then you opened this charter school. This charter school met her needs. This was very important to her. She got out of that environment. Finally, she was challenged. She isn't bored with school anymore. And she got a new set of friends. They're good friends. The problems at home stopped. And things were really great for her. But if you pass this and close this charter school, you're going to put my daughter back into the environment that was toxic for her. Please don't hurt her. Please don't hurt our family. Vote against this measure. Thank you. Now notice that I spoke in less than two minutes, almost less than one minute. Okay, and what I was able to do during that time is I was able to show protocol. Address the board properly, tell them who I was. Tell them who I was in such a way that they should care about my opinion. Then I told them my personal story about how my daughter and our family would be impacted by a negative decision. On whether or not to close the school board. This is the best way for the public to provide testimony. If they are not a lawyer, a statistician, or some other official of that or scientist that is relevant to what is going on. Um, so make sure that you provide your personal story. Don't try to compete with the experts. In a political environment, logic doesn't always apply. In a political environment. You know, what is politically, you know, favorable or unfavorable often carries the day. Now, oftentimes, you're not going to see a board whose mind has been changed. Say, oh, my gosh, you opened my eyes. I've changed my mind. That almost never happens. One way you'll be able to tell if you were successful is if they say something like. Um, Madam Chair, I see some information here on this testimony that I'd like to take some time to consider. So I'd like to. So I would like to uh um table this until the next meeting. And so if they agree to table the meeting, that's a victory. That is a big victory. So make sure always that you close by telling them what you want. If you have been a salesman, if you have ever been in sales. One thing they tell you is to make the close, ask for the sale. And so when you're done speaking, make sure you, you say, uh please, for these reasons, vote no on this. Measure or this ordinance or vote yes on it, whatever the case is. And then thank them for their time. Close by thanking them for their time, even if you think that they are political enemies. Be gracious. You know, this shows up on television. This shows up among the people who are watching. This shows up to the newspaper reporter. And goes a long way to carrying the day. So make sure you thank about them. So um if you go to the website. You'll have another quiz. So Val, I'm gonna ask you to participate. Okay, Val is back. Looks like his connection dropped, but now he's back. Okay.
Repeat it first, like I said.
That's okay. So the, the quiz that we're on here is, who is the potential audience of your testimony? A, everyone who views my testimony either in person or a recording of it. B, only the school board, or C, everyone who attends the school board I testify at. So which one of those do you think it is, Val?
Be everyone who sees it.
That's right. It's a potentially very large audience. And if a newspaper reporter covers the school board meeting, it could be an extremely large audience. So always be aware of that. Okay, what should not be included in the introduction of your testimony? A, your name. B, whether you have children attending schools in the district. Or B, evidence for my stance on the issue.
Um, evidence.
That's right. Now, evidence can be important when you're making your testimony. But it's not appropriate fodder for the introduction of your testimony. Should you share your stance on the testimony in a single sentence? A, yes. B, no. C, it doesn't matter how I share my stance.
Um, guess I'd say no.
You'd say no? Actually, the answer is yes.
Oh, really?
Yep, because when you begin and when you end, you want to tell them exactly what you want.
Oh, I see. I see what you mean.
Yep, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Um, and after you've done your introduction, you can say, I am here in opposition to ordinance one, two, three, which would close down my daughter's charter school. And then at the end, make the close, saying, for this reason, I expect you to vote no. On ordinance one, two, three, which would close down my daughter's public school. Yeah, believe it or not, sometimes I get these wrong too. Um, next one, uh, why should you share a personal story about the issue of your testimony? A, to increase your name status in the community? B, a compelling personal story can carry more weight than any attorney, scientist, statistician or expert. Or C, to give me a break from citing evidence or facts on the issue?
Uh, we'd be.
It's B, that's right. Although it can also increase your name status in the community. That can be useful if you're trying to expand your sphere of influence, but that is not. Uh, should be not, not a reason why you're uh sharing a personal story. It's, it's to. Carry the weight that such stories carry within politics. Okay. So the third section we're talking about today, excuse me. Is testifying in person yourself. The moment has come to meet the school board and testify. Um, you're ready to go, but first we're going to give you some tips. First, why you should testify in person. Um, this is something that we never used to do training on, but we need to now because there are so many ways to provide testimony. If you testify in person, you show enough. That you care to actually be there and that in itself has impact. But also, if you're testifying in person, you can look the school board members in the eye. This has importance as well. You also can meet other people who are there. This is a good networking opportunity. This is a chance for people to see what you stand for. And it is not uncommon for people who agree with you to come up and ask how you can help. You can find allies. And another good reason is because um, there could be a newspaper reporter there. And a lot of times they'll say, you know, it was interesting what you said in your testimony. Could I ask you a few questions? And you might find yourself quoted in the newspaper. And that's the reason why the newspaper is part of your audience. Also, it's a good way to set an example for your kids. You know, it shows that you're fighting for them and it shows you care enough to go out and, and. Attend a meeting and sit there for a while and then say your thing. It shows that you, you really care. These are all good reasons why you should testify in person. Uh, the reason why it's a question is because now a lot of people take virtual testimony. They'll take testimony through Microsoft Teams, or they'll take testimony through Zoom. And sometimes they'll take written testimony. They'll always take written testimony. Written testimony is very seldom persuasive. It's better than doing nothing, at least to put you on the record, but written testimony is often glanced at and then set aside. Um, if you can't do anything else, do written testimony. Occasionally, it is impactful. Uh, but if you can't do that, but can't show up, virtual testimony is better than nothing. You know, you do get to see the faces of people. They do get to see your face. It doesn't have the impact of being there in person. But it is more impactful than written testimony alone. Um, not as impactful as personal testimony. So try to get there if you can. And to uh repeat a session, go to the school district website, learn what you can. Find out what time the board meeting is, check what it is on the agenda, show up early. Find out what you can about the process. Uh, learn the rules. Again, check the website. Find out how you testify. For uh in-person testimony or virtual testimony. If they're doing virtual testimony only, which. Most of them are not doing now. Find out what software they have, Zoom, Teams. Or something else and make sure you've got that software. Test it in advance. Make sure it works properly. You know, this background I have here, I had a hard time making it work uh with Zoom. Uh, but if I had just gone in and tried to make it work, assuming it would be okay. You know, it wouldn't function, but uh test it in advance. Make sure that your microphone works, your speakers work, you can under. You know, every system provides a way to self-test. Make sure that, that you can do that. Um, but learn through the website how to sign up to testify. Usually there's a table at the entrance way. And you can see a piece of paper there to testify and fill that out, turn it into the administrator or the secretary that's working there. Uh, find out how much meeting time is dedicated to testimonies. Craft your speech to fit within that time. Do not go one second over. Uh, form a testimony team to cover different aspects of the issue at hand. If you have more that can be covered within your time allotment, um, if there is. If, if there are graphs or written materials that you want to hand out in support of your testimony. Make sure there's enough there for the staff and the school board members. So if you've got seven school board members, I would say bring ten copies, three for staff. One each for the board members and give those to the administrator. They'll make sure that those materials are handed out. Um, so educating yourself on this information will prevent you from being excluded from testifying due to a technicality. And finally. If you're unable to find information on the district website about a school board's testifying protocol or procedures, call the district office. And ask them for that information. So that is uh the third point. So the quiz we have on testifying in person. Uh, is one, why is testifying in person the most effective option? A, testifying in person ensures people have to listen to you. B, testifying in person allows your message to reach more people and be memorable. And C, testifying in person is not the most effective option. So which one do you think it is, Val?
Uh, the B.
Yeah, um, that's true. Arguably, A would be acceptable as well. Um, but B, I think is the best answer, so good job. Two, what should be your first step to prepare to testify? A, go to the school district website. B, write out my testimony. C, pick what I will wear and I will testify.
Um, I guess A first, right?
That's right. Yeah, we talked about that in the first section. Um, and it's generally true when preparing to testify as well. What is not part of testimony protocols and procedures? A, how long each person has to testify. B, how to submit, include written materials in my testimony and C. Giving a written copy of my testimony to the school board before I testify.
Uh, could you repeat those?
Yeah, um, what is not a part of testimony protocols and procedures? A, how long each person has to che- testify. B, how to submit or include written testimony in your testimony. Or C, giving a written copy of your testimony to the school board before you testify.
Uh, it'd be C, right?
That would be C. Now, you can give the school board a copy of whatever you're uh using, um, but it is not. Generally a part of the protocols and procedures. Um, if you're just providing supporting materials to your testimony and not the testimony itself. Uh, there sometimes is protocol and procedure as to how many copies to distribute and who to give it to. But generally. I would give any written materials that you have supporting your testimony. Uh, make sure there's one for each school board member and three for staff. And finally, four, what should you do if you can't find information on testifying protocols and procedures? Uh, A, review the local newspaper. B, go on social media to find more information, or C, call the school district office.
Uh, C.
That's right. Sometimes you get lucky and it is in the local newspaper, but not very often. And uh it's almost never on the social media, so call the district office. So anyhow, I'm gonna try one more time to get on this website to see if that has been fixed. And there it is. It's working now. So I'm gonna go to Parents Rights and Education.
You're not uh still sharing your screen, by the way.
Yeah, I know. I'm gonna have to show that in a second. Okay, so if you go to parentsrightsandeducation.com. I said dot org before and that's not right. So if I go to share the screen. Here we go. This is what you'll see. Okay, so this is what you'll see. And you can join free membership here. You can contribute by joining the twelve by twelve program. I think it's twelve dollars per twelve months. Uh, and let's see, we've got uh the Training Center. If you go here to the Training Center. Takes a second to come up. Here you go. And I'm already signed in, but you can. Provide your password and username, or if you don't have one, you can sign up and make an account. So if I go to the Training Center. Here it is. And here's how to effectively testify to your school board. See the course. So that's loading and here we are. Now, we've covered three of the sections here. Know your board, preparing your testimony and testifying in person. But there are other sections that we'll cover in subsequent trainings. So you can see the training if I go to know your board. You'll see that there's a video there. I'm gonna play it real quick.
Welcome to the Parents Rights and Education Parent Activist Training Center, where we're training you on how to find information about school boards. It is important to research the school board you're planning to testify at before you show up. To find out about a specific school board and upcoming school board meetings, go to the website of that school district for that school board. That will.
Okay, you get the idea there. And this provides additional information, much of which we've copied today. And then uh you can uh take a quiz. You've got a quiz right here. This is the quiz we went over. And there's more information, frequently asked questions, additional resources. Uh, this is really a great resource. And if you go back, you'll find the same thing, preparing your testimony that we also went over today. Again, there's another video.
Welcome to the Parents Rights and Education Parent Activist Training Center. Where we're training you on the ins and outs of testifying as school boards. So you can raise awareness on issues affecting your child's education and be part of the change you want to see. Testifying as school boards is a great way to create awareness on specific issues or topics in school.
So again, you, you see the information that's related to that, much of which we've covered today. And then there's another quiz. Um. It's just full of information. If I go back, there's just a bunch here. And what you'll find is that there is a course currently for testifying in front of your school board and how to win your school board election. And over time, you're gonna find additional uh lessons that are also here that you can track on. And subsequent interactive video trainings will be provided on all of these uh issues. Uh, in addition to the on-demand resources that you see before you. So Val, before we call it a day, um. Is there anything you would like to ask or anything you would like to add?
Um, I, yeah, um. I guess, um, when it comes to sharing uh written testimony, I actually have, um. It's not school board, uh Building Code Review Board.
A what review board?
Building Code Review Board. I propose an amendment to them, so we'll see how that goes, but um. I have a feeling if uh it goes to public hearing, they're gonna want like written materials from me. So I don't know, like I, I assume some things differ, but um. I'm curious, like, if you have uh things that you want to submit, like written things. Uh, do you normally do that beforehand, or is that something that you will like, you know, hand out when you're there?
Sure, that's a good question. Now, if you, you know, a lot of times, um, I don't know about planning commissions. Uh, school boards are a little different. Planning commissions are different, uh, but there is sometimes a comment period. Uh, for specific projects that are under consideration. If you have extensive written materials, it's good to provide them well in advance. Uh, if however, you're just providing materials relating to the testimony you're providing in a school board. Uh, or, or some other board, then typically it's just enough to provide supporting materials. At the meeting itself, but if what you have is extremely involved and needs to be considered before a school board meeting. As early as you can get it to them, the better, and then you can refer to, to those materials during your testimony. Uh, if you wish, with the assumption that the board members should already be, you know, privy to what you're doing. So uh, you know, you, you don't want to sandbag your board with a whole bunch of materials in advance. Don't do that. If, if it's, if it's extensive and involved, provide it well in advance. Uh, the, what I'm talking about here though is just, you know, for the testimony itself. If you have supporting information regarding your testimony, and that's not overly extensive, just provide it at the board meeting itself. Uh, does that help, Val?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it does.
And, and these, these uh techniques, you know, they're tailored to school boards, but they work for almost any kind of board or legislative committee. So this is good information you can cross apply to a variety of circumstances.
Sure, yeah. Okay, um, never, never specifically school board. Um, I actually, I don't have any uh kids, but um. Definitely uh testified in a lot of different situations feels kind of, uh, you know. Like a town select ward, um. So, yeah, I'm, I'm glad to know it kind of is, is similar across different.
Well, I hope this has been helpful to you. Well, I hope this has been helpful to you, Val.
Yes, yes, it has.
And so uh, anyway, we're going to continue to do these trainings. Uh, we will run weekly or bi-weekly for a while. Watch your email for uh, notices on when subsequent trainings are taking place and I hope you're there. Uh, wish you well and God bless. And if there's nothing else, we'll call it a day.